Overlapped in many, many areas. And so that was refreshing, that they didn't uncover really new, new things, some new things, but many things had been known about but just deferred. The buildings, you know, in general have been found, they've been well maintained, but many of them are quite old. You know, some of them have grandparents that, or great-grandparents that graduated out of one of these schools. And a lot of them, of course, because some are very new, but each of them requires some level of improvement. As well as the notion that education's changed. You can't teach out of textbooks solely anymore. There needs to be technology in each classroom and available to students, so that's important. And investments are needed to keep up with all that. So generally what we've learned, if you looked at the building stock from the oldest building in our district, the middle school built in 1955, to the newest building, Prairie View, built in 2009, you can see there's generally a pretty old to the left in red or orange, and a pretty new to the right in yellow or mustard, including the high school, Sand Lake and Prairie View. That said, none of these buildings are without need for some renovation or upgrade, and that includes the grounds, not just the buildings themselves. So that's an important note to make. So we're gonna go on to February.
All right, so as we got that gigantic report, right, we decided to dive into it as intentionally as we could, right? As, you know, Rick said, we reviewed the enrollment projections, right? You know, when I was in school, it seemed like the town was blowing up and booming, and you had all these kids running around and we're wondering where we're gonna put them, right? And so we added elementary schools. Well, then you had to add them to the middle school, right? So obviously, as population changes, there's different needs. But we're not growing at that level that we were anymore, right? There's still a bubble of a large group of kids within the classes, and we need to think about them, but we're not, maybe it's what you would think with all the building, we're not growing a ton in total enrollment, actually, especially not in the lowest grades. But, you know, we're still at capacity in a lot of buildings, even with that, right? It's decreased slightly, but obviously you see all the building that's going on. We're certainly not in a cliff where we're losing students all the time. We had a staff survey that we put out, and I think they came to the board a couple months ago as well, and delivered a message about what the staff had felt. Again, it matched that John Daly list of the deferred maintenance needs that they had found over time, but seeing the administrators of the different schools, the principals and the teachers, they, all of them are really proud of their schools, even the older schools that maybe are less current and probably obviously need a little bit more work. They were all really proud of the history of those buildings. And like Rick said, we got lots of stories about, you know, my parents experienced this or my grandparents experienced this, and so we don't want to lose that history, but obviously there's a lot of maintenance that's been deferred over the years because they've been fiscally sound. So through the progress, right, the finance committee over the years has been really responsible, but obviously the needs grow as buildings get older, and so they've been doing a good job of refinancing debt, right? Julie's gonna talk about that, I think, in a little more detail in the future as well, but they did some creative things, and Rick will show you in a future slide of what the results were of them being financially responsible. And I think the most important thing to know is that as we've done all these remodels, the school district has a history of paying things off faster than what's required, right? It's not like they have a history of trying to finance a project and all of a sudden it's past what we expected, right? They've always done a good job of managing it well, I can take any credit for it. When we were making the list of the different things to do, though, we had to try to make some type of a prioritization list, right, different categories. So the first category looked at was safety, right? Are kids safe in school? And I don't necessarily mean like security safe, right? You know, as buildings sag and you have different additions, is it safe for kids to walk between hallways? Do we have tiles that are falling off the ceiling, tiles that are coming up from the ground? Not just appearance, right, but is it actually safe to be in that school? As well as, you know, ADA compliance, right? Is it possible for somebody who maybe is in a wheelchair to get from one part of the building to the other by themselves? Do they have to wait for somebody to help them do that, right? Those needs are changing all the time. The second was functionality. So does it still meet the function that we need to educate our students, right? I noticed like two of those schools haven't had any additions since 2006. Like, were cell phones even a thing back in 2006, right? Like, obviously times have changed a lot, and the way that we teach has changed a lot, and I think one of the things we hear all the time is there's more hands-on learning is better, right? But do the schools even allow that to be a possibility right now? And do some, but not others, right? Are we being equitable to those other schools? Do they operate right, right? We have HVAC systems in them all, but if you block off an acuator and you can't blow air to part of the building, no matter how high you turn it up, is it really gonna make it cool? And now you have students who can't focus on working, too hot or too cold. And then the third was return on investment, right? Are we doing things that are gonna save us money in the long run? You can keep putting new paint on a surface over time, but eventually is it gonna need to be fixed? And can we change the systems of HVC and electrical, putting in LED lights that maybe spending money today is gonna save us money for the next 10, 20, 30 years down the road? And then when we have less issues to worry about, our excellent staff that fixes things can get to things quicker because there's not as much going on. And then last was appearance, right? Like, we all want to be proud of our schools. We've all driven through those towns that aren't like Holman, where you see the schools and they're kind of in shambles, falling apart. I think a big part of our community is that we're all really proud of our schools, right? I mean, whether they're old and they have history, or they're new and they're beautiful. We want to make sure that we do keep things appearing nicely, but know that that's not the priority over making sure that it's functional, safe, or efficient for the future.
All right, Kyle mentioned we've all driven through those towns where you can tell that the district or community hasn't quite been able to capture the maintenance element of their, of their culture, their buildings, their, what makes up their town. My wife and I recently took a driving tour through Iowa. That was part of our vacation. More on that later, but we ended up driving along the Mississippi River, kind of going back and forth between river towns, and went through a town called Keokuk, Iowa. And I don't mean to disrespect anybody in the room that has come from there or has relatives there, but it was a, it was a town that was actively decaying. All of the infrastructure seemed to be just falling apart. Roads were falling apart. Houses were falling apart. The downtown Main Street, every building, not just, not just empty, but the buildings were crumbling. It was, I don't know the underlying causes of that, but it struck me as I was thinking about this while we were driving through Iowa, because sometimes there's not a lot of other things to think about while you're driving through Iowa, is that we are being proactive as a community. And I mentioned earlier about the notion of being fiscally responsible as something that always captured our eyes about the way that this district is managed. And in 2012 and 13, which is the first bar on that chart, $11.40 mill rate was when my son graduated high school here, a little after Kyle. And, uh, nothing about that. But we represent different vantage points from different, I only say that because we represent different vantage points approaching the district. My kids have come here and graduated and left, and Kyle's got kids that are gonna come into this district really soon. So at $11.40, I was happy to pay that mill rate. I'd been here for 20, about 20 years already, and I don't remember it ever being much different than that. And when Julie showed these numbers and this stark decline, I was like, oh, what's going on? Why the decline? And some of you might be answering, asking the same question. So $11.40 per $1,000 of valued property, down at $8.35 per $1,000 of valued property today. If you think about the difference in that revenue between then and now, that's, that's a lot of money that the district doesn't have available to do the things that the district wants to do. And, you know, in general, they've been very fiscally responsible. We haven't invested in a new building since 2009 in terms of an all-new building. That's part of the reason that there's, the debt is being served. So over the course of the last five years, they've been paying off debt. In 2020, Prairie View was refunded or refinanced at a different rate to pay off that debt sooner. And in 2021, 2022, there was a state property tax relief that went into effect that provided more funds into the district so that it didn't need to levy as much, because there was intent to reduce people's property taxes, which everybody appreciates. But again, it, that, that reduces the district's ability to do what it needs to do over time. But nonetheless, taxpayers want to see that. So how do we compare in terms of levy in regards to our district versus neighboring districts? You can see the red bar there represents $8.35 per $1,000 of value property, property value. Next down is on Alaska, and most recently is Melrose, Manduro. I'm also a firefighter in the Manduro Fire District, and those firefighter friends of mine used to just poke at me at how expensive it was to live in Holman because we spent so much on our schools. Hmm. Okay, so I have something to go talk back to them about lately, but they did a fabulous job of investing in their schools to consolidate them all into one campus, did a lot of site investments. It's something that they're extremely proud about. And when I go back there and say, hey, look at it now, they're gonna tell me, I don't care, we're happy about what we did, and we did it for a good reason. So I think we'll be in a similar position, you know, by reinvesting in our, in our buildings and infrastructure. And we'll see some of that recommendation, how it affects the mill rate later on. So in April, we started to continue down the list of how do we sort out all of the various things that Kyle mentioned, we wanted to prioritize the lists on. So that deferred maintenance list, John Daly's was looked at, the school staff input was looked at, the NEXUS report was looked at, and we identified areas that we could align for remodeling and develop the consensus around some options. And that gives some people the ability to continue further discussions about those options, talk about them amongst the community, think about which ones might be better than others, and how do you actually come to the community with the proposal versus just select groupings or age groups of, of students with a proposal? And Kyle's gonna talk about some of those options and how they were viewed.
All right, so option one, probably the biggest priority when we were putting this together, was the biggest areas of need for maintenance, right? There's a, there's a ton of maintenance needs in obviously the older schools, and I think that just logically makes sense. When you see remodel on the right, what that remodel is usually referring to is something that we've been maintaining, but it needs to be remodeled to be maintained, right? An example would be like we have walls on a bathroom, right? And maybe that bathroom has been leaking over time, or you have the same tiles falling off because there's water issues behind it. Well, does it make sense to just paint that wall? Or is the appropriate thing to go in, look at those pipes, look at where the things are actually located within the bath and where the outlets are? And if you're already doing that and taking out that wall, does it make the most sense at that time to update it as well? This option one is truly just doing that, trying to do the minimums that we can to fix the problems that are getting worse all the time. And that includes a little bit of remodeling along with it, right? Some of the things that we heard from teachers at the three elementary schools, and the middle school especially, was if we try to plug more than one thing in in the room, the circuit blows, right? Or when we try to do our school events, which are supposed to be a highlight of your school year and bring all the kids into the gyms to do events and celebrate achievements, we have to run extension cords from different wings of the buildings. And now we got all the students trying to come into the auditorium or the gym, and we have extension cords run through the hallways, which like to me is terrifying, right? And then what if one of those cords gets kicked and pulled out and it's the important part? You can just imagine the chaos that comes from that, right? If you know students who are in the middle school, there's bathrooms that when you flush too many things at once, turn too many sinks on, water goes everywhere. And so the custodians end up having to constantly help with the same issues over and over again. Does it make sense to just fix that one sink, or do we disassemble that and remodel the bathroom so that it fixes those issues? Walls that don't go all the way up, right? So if I'm sitting on the right side of a classroom and the teacher's over here, do I hear the teacher that's teaching me or the room next door? Because the wall wasn't built all the way up. Well, that's a remodel, right? Even though I would argue it's fixing an issue that's going on, that's considered remodel. So when you see the checks on the right side in this proposal, it's really just remodeling things that are a maintenance issue in itself. The next one is where we start to really make a bigger difference, but we wanted to have one, you'll see what this does to the mill rate, we wanted to have one option that fixes the bare minimums, which I know 72 million doesn't sound like a bare minimum, but when you spread it across many buildings, right, it doesn't go as far as you may think. All right, so next is to expand beyond just those schools. One thing I wish I would've mentioned a little bit, I apologize, on that last one was the middle school, right? We looked at like a new middle school, because I think everybody understands that that's an issue if you've been in the middle school. It would cost more than that for just a middle school, right? And then have we done anything for the elementary schools that are just as old and having just as many issues? If anybody's been over to Evergreen, you know there's caution tape around the playground. And so you can't even have kids playing on it. Part of the remodel on here, too, is site remodel, right? So Evergreen has an issue where if anybody's ever driven by Evergreen when school's out, it backs all the way up to Main Street, and now you have elementary school was running down the road to try to find where their parents are in the auto line, which again is also terrifying. So that would be a remodel as well, right? Remodeling the path of where the buses and the students get picked up. All right. So then we expand it to Prairie View, Sand Lake, and the high school deferred maintenance. Obviously, some of these schools don't need as much, they're not as old, they're a lot newer than the first schools that we mentioned, and some of them had more care than others. So if you want to go to the next list, the stuff in green is what's added on here. Know that there is some expansion on the deferred maintenance and remodels of the other schools with this, but here's where we get into Prairie View, Sand Lake, the high school. The big piece in the high school, I know you may look out there and see that we just had a nice remodel, but the initial part of the high school that was first built has a roof that got jointed up with other parts of the building as they've been expanded on, which causes an issue with leaking. If you don't fix a leak, that leads to other issues down the road which become more expensive. So that was part of our third criteria in making sure that what we're doing is saving money down the road, not just frivolously spending it. This also at Prairie View, which I understand is very new, gives us more space for hands-on education, right? Which, for those of you who have young children or babysit grandkids, you know, that's a much easier way to keep those younger kids engaged and you can have hands-on. And group sessions, right? Having walls that are removable so you can do group sessions within there. Again, you see more schools affected. Our goal is to make Albury School more equitable. Right now, if you talk to parents who live in different areas, you'll have people who want to drive all the way across town to take their elementary schools, elementary schoolers to a different school, which obviously causes bigger issues down the road, too. And there's gonna be more developments that come. So making all the elementary schools more comparable and equitable between each other was a really big deal when we were considering all of this. And I feel like option two at least does that. It at least gets all the middle schools to a point where they are ADA compliant, we have the hands-on labs for everybody, and we're having outlets that can be plugged into without frying the entire circuit in the, in the buildings. And then next is my favorite, maybe it's because I'm young, right? And I want to make everything as good as it can be, because my son's about to get into school, so it means a lot to me. But this is the one that really does everything that was identified in the NEXUS report as, as an issue for maintenance, or things that we got from the teachers and the principals that were a potential issue. We wanted to show what it would cost to do everything for everybody, right? And what I mean by everything for everybody is literally there isn't one segment of the school or the district of any of the schools that doesn't get touched, right? We have a beautiful weight room. Does that affect every single sport, right? Are we being fair and equitable to all the other sports that are on the school grounds? So updating a little bit of the athletic, but we really don't need a ton in that category, right? We have beautiful athletic facilities, but that would be considered a remodel, right? Remodeling the site is considered a remodel. There's not really a remodel that needs to happen at the high school. But as soon as you move dirt fences, right, or take care of bleacher problems, well, that's considered a remodel, so that's where you see this check. The biggest difference here, again, is that you see every school is being touched, every segment of the population, whether your kid wants to run cross-country, do track, football, soccer, it doesn't matter what sport they're in, they're gonna be able to be proud of the facilities that the school has for them. And touches on things that we had put in the initial referendums before the high school remodel that have been put to the side as well.
All right, so this, this slide compares the three scenarios that Kyle just pointed out. The numbers on the slide don't exactly match what Kyle had laid out for a number of different reasons, but the, in general, the three scenarios represent what we call the bare minimum, the middle, the middle one, which is always the second child, I mean, the second scenario, and the, you know, the, the third scenario, or the all-in scenario. It includes some incremental operating budget for operating new facilities, and some of that replaces what is known as the technology referendum that will expire in 2024. The numbers aren't identical there, you don't see a $400,000 technology referent or incremental operating element, it's rolled back in in some level. But the intent here is to show the impact on the mill rate in each characteristic or each scenario. These are only estimates, they're not firm, there's a lot of variables that still would have to come to fruition once the levy would come into being, but they're intended to provide an overview of, of what we would say the, the bare minimum of doing something for the facilities is to what the, what the intended all-in scenario would provide. So just for, for comparison's sake, there's a 15 cent add on the mill rate for the bare minimum element. If we did nothing to our mill rate and wanted to just keep the mill rate at what it was, we could invest almost $66 million, and that would not impact our mill rate, we don't think, going forward. So, but doing absolutely nothing would send the mill rate down even lower, which would be good for taxes at some level, but you'd become Keokuk on the north end of Iowa, to my earlier scenario. And no, that wouldn't happen in, in one year, it wouldn't happen in five years, but it might happen 10 years down the road, especially if that became a philosophy of, of the board. I know it's not, I know it's not of the community, but it's good to put in perspective where you could be. So, that said, if we looked at that graphically, again, this is a repeat of the slide earlier showing the mill rate from 2012 to 2022, where we're currently at at $8.35. And you can see scenario one, that was like the bare minimum, $8.50 mill rate, up to $8.92 mill rate. And you'll notice that none of them come, meet the level of what the levy was back in 2020 or 2021. So investing significantly in our district can do a lot of good, and the mill rate's been managed fiscal, in a fiscally responsible manner for the past decade and more, and we're in a great position to reinvest in our buildings and grounds and generate a good learning environment for Kyle's grandkids when they come, and mine if they come back. So, that's that.
So, thank you so much for sharing your work and the progression in that. So, one thing that's definitely different than in the past, as we talked about, you got to see the pattern of the mill rate, but then with a lot of some of these scenarios, there could be a possible, you know, 15 cent or incremental increase and so on. And just thought it would be important to bring a survey to our community and wanted to see your feedback from the board to find out and get input from the community, get feedback from the community, to find out what is most important to them out of all these options? Like, let them give us some input on these options, and, you know, is it something that they would consider as a community, these different options and the tax impact that goes along with it? And then we could, the idea would be to give a survey to the community here coming up right away, starting this first week in June, get it out. And when I say community, it's not just our residents, or, I mean, I'm sorry, it's not just our district residents, it's like our whole community of Holman in our mailing area. So it'd encompass all ages, people that have kids, people that don't, and so on, and give us some good data that we could take, a lot, that along with all this other information we have, and then with the idea of bringing a recommendation back to the board in July. So, wanted to share that with you and just looking to see if we could, if we'd have board consensus to move forward with a survey to get more data and collect more information from our community around what they're, what they're feeling and what their thoughts are on these different, on the work that our buildings and grounds have done. So, with that, that was a lot. Any questions that you may have, and just looking for your thoughts on the survey?
Yeah, I have a few questions. So, as far as, I, I find ADA compliance to be important. I didn't see that in option one, but that is in option two and option three, is that correct?
It, it is also in option one, too.
It is in option one also.
Yep, it's just not on every single facility.
Okay, so just those three, like in Evergreen and, and yeah, okay. And then middle school. Is the only option, I'm assuming option three, you were still talking about moving the 4K to the elementary buildings, is that still on the table or no?
With the, the enrollment data that we got, we didn't feel like it was necessary to do that at this time. It's certainly, they gave us a great plan forward, and it could be entertained down the road again, but with the projections that we were given for the next five years, it wouldn't be necessary to do that. And with some of the remodeling, we'd have, you know, more space where they're doing it now.
Okay. And then, whatever path we move forward, I, I think I saw a checkmark by sinking fund, so everything would have a sinking fund associated with it.
Absolutely.
Okay, excellent. And I am supportive of the survey, but I think it's really important to make sure, like that last slide you had up, that that is included with the survey so they can see the history of the mill rate.
Okay, yep.
You know, I, you know, have, have like a brief description of the three scenarios and then show the history of the mill rate and how those three scenarios impact the mill rate. I think that's really important.
Thank you for your input. And I, and thank you for bringing up the part about the operating funds, because, you know, once you, we, we found success in the most recent, between the high school, Prairie View, when we did that in Sand Lake, and we found much success in, you know, once you re-update and get the facility how you want it, to maintain it and have that ongoing operating budget to do that, just will keep the district running in great condition for many, many years. Yeah, Barb?
I guess I have a question, or I'm looking for some more explanation, because when it comes to the high school and the deferred maintenance, I know that one of the huge selling points to our community when that addition was put on was that it wasn't going to cost the taxpayer anything? And now we're being told that because we put an addition on it, now the roof needs to be fixed where the addition was placed. Could you explain that?
Yeah, that's not the area that actually needs the replacing, it's the older side of the building, which is the complete opposite. But there's still been changes since that part of the building was built. It's not any part that touches the, the new addition, so.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah. Chad, are we good?
You're absolutely correct.
Thank you, Kyle.
One thing I did not mention, and I'm just gonna steal it for a second, is the kitchens. Right, if you think about what kitchen equipment costs nowadays just to build a restaurant, let alone to update the kitchens at those facilities, especially the older ones, right? Their jobs have changed a lot, so I forgot to mention that in my notes, and I apologize, but that was a, a big part of the cost, too, was just new equipment and where you can put those things, and having storage for things so we can buy things at a better price for the future, too.
I don't know if there's any opposition to a survey, but how would you go administering that? Would it be Mailer, Survey Monkey, some online, multiple ways?
So we, we would, in working with NEXUS Solutions, we, they, part of working with them, they, we work with what's called school perceptions, which is, their job is surveys that go out to communities on topics such as this. Many even of our surrounding districts have been doing surveys similar in the area for capital improvement projects such as this. And so, basically, it would be a, you not only can email, but you can mail to every household, and then they would have a contact where they could contact us and get, if they have different opinions in a household, then they can get another survey within the household. And then we're also looking at how do we make sure it is And then we're also looking at how do we make sure it is available for our Hmong population and other language populations, and making sure that they're all able to take that survey also and give their feedback. So, does that answer?
That's it, perfect, yep.
Yep.
The one question I had was, when it talks about the elementary playgrounds, are they looking at upgrading all four to be pretty much equitable across the board?
Yeah, even the most recently built playgrounds, like we were told from some of the staff, they'd have to bring out like carpet or mats to be able to get some of the disabled children even out to the playground, let alone if it's even able to be played on, they couldn't even get to it. And then obviously, the materials you put down underneath the playground equipment has changed quite a bit, so there's some remodel to all of them to be able to make that happen. Obviously, some are a lot more than others, but even on the most recently built playgrounds, there's been some things that have changed to make it easier for everybody to access them in, safe.
And I'm guessing the parking and bus pickup and kid pickup at, say, Evergreen and Viking will be more similar to that of Sand Lake and Prairie View? Is that what we're planning there?
So the actual, the design, the design isn't complete, obviously, because that's the next, that would be a phase after. But we would definitely be looking at site improvements for drop-off pickup at Evergreen and Viking, and that improvements with that. Yes, that's part of, that is part of the dollars that you're seeing at those two buildings.
I like that it's separated at those other elementary schools, where the buses are and where the.
Yeah, that helps greatly with safety.
Definitely with safety, yeah.
Yeah, when the, I think, was it, you mentioned that you were by the doors and you literally see second graders and first graders running between buses and cars as people are trying to cut through the neighborhoods, right? If you had to go out County V, different schools out, people are trying to get there in a hurry, and they're literally cutting through neighborhoods quickly in their vehicles, and you have kids trying to run out to find where their parents are in their vehicles, like it's, it just doesn't sound safe.
I guess, I got one more question. So, option three, you had mentioned that it was like the full NEXUS plan, but you also just said that the 4K is not part of it any longer. What other aspects of the plan are no longer part of option three that was in the NEXUS plan?
I think that's really.
I think, I think the best way, right, the best way to describe option three is essentially, if you look at the report, and it's, it's been tweaked slightly since December, but it's fairly consistent. Anything that was labeled high priority in the report is essentially what's considered the option three. So all the zero to five-year legalization options would be essentially that, that option three.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
All right. So, just wanna, I got from a couple of you, we're good if we can move forward. We'll make sure that we get a draft and you see that survey before and share the timeline with you before it would go out.
I'd like to, on some of the math, if some of the houses in the area have gone up $100,000 or so, so if those houses, if they're paying $8.92,000 now, they're probably paying the same amount of taxes as they were at $10.34. So we've got to be careful of that and make sure that we're not really putting more burden on some of those. I know the evaluation of the school district has gone up, like, well, last year was like 5%, the year before was over 3%, I think. But those houses that have gone up, we've all seen our neighborhoods, the houses go, you know, the house across the street all of a sudden sells for $350,000. But those guys are paying a lot more taxes, at eight, at eight or nine dollars, they're paying a lot more taxes than they were at 11.
Part of the estimate, too, was only using, I think, was it 4% inflation on home value?
Actually, I think it might have been too very conservative. So the tax base in the variables is very conservative. You're right, Gary, it is based on fair market value, so with the inflation of housing costs, the mill rate is just per thousand. So if you have an increase in, in fair market, you are correct. And just to clarify, last year, the equalized property valuation actually went up over 11% in this district. Much of that, more than 50% of that, was new housing.
Where all the kids.
So it may not need that, right? It may not need that much of a hit to it if the values are that much higher already.
Sure. If the equalized property valuation goes up more than 2% than the mill rate per thousand in order to achieve option one, two, or three as far as a referendum or a bond, would be less. All other things, yep.
There's a lot of variables there, so.
My point, just my point was, it's pretty volatile right now.
No.
Absolutely. I know the other thing that we considered was the cost of inflation of materials, and if we don't do some of these projects in the zero to five years, what that looks like. And so that was part of the projection, and NEXUS gave us really, really good detail, and we did kind of overestimate even what inflation has been in those bits, knowing that some of the projects are a two- or three-year thing, but we wanted to be very cognizant of that, and, you know, the finance committee's always done a good job of keeping things at or less than what was expected, so, just to touch on that.
Any other, great discussion?
There's no objections.
Anything else?
I think, yeah, go forward with the survey.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
I wouldn't want to build a house right now. Before she's applied with her item, ninety.
Anything else, Dr. Mueller, or move on?
Just cut down your own tree.
We can, we'll move on to consent agenda items. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with the background materials for each of these items, or it has been discussed at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon as one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled from the consent agenda, it will be voted on separately. Any items that would like to be pulled from the consent agenda? All right. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
So move.
Gary?
Second.
Rebecca? Any discussion? None? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposition? Assuming? Motion passes? We'll move on to our board debriefs. I will call upon the board members in role order to ask if they present any comments or committee reports that you may have. Rebecca?
Um, no, just a quick congratulations to all the retirees. I'm not sure if I'll make it, but I'll let Stacy know, I think, on Thursday, Wednesday. And then thank you to Mr. Hayden, Mr. Patzner for presenting tonight. It was kind of nice to have a different group up there telling us what the committee's been doing. Um, and I know Mr. Brando's new to the district too, so he's been doing a lot of work, so thanks for everybody doing all that. I don't have anything else. Graduation Saturday.
Over here?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Brian?
I'd like to thank the Holman Area Foundation for providing staff and administration grants. They put a lot of time and effort into all the fundraising, and I know firsthand that they're, everyone really appreciates the extra support that they give. I'd also like to thank Mr. Gasper and his staff for providing the elementary end-of-the-year picnics. It's really nice to see all the community come out and enjoy a meal together, and he and his team do a really good job at putting that together. Would like to wish the seniors the best of luck as they move forward in their future endeavors and to make the most out of the next week with world tour and graduation, and we have a lot to be thankful for in this community. And good luck to the rest of the student body, and especially at the high school, those who are approaching finals for the end of the year.
Barb?
I would also like to say congratulations to the class of 2022. Excited to be a part of the ceremony on Saturday. Also, congratulations to our retirees. I can show my age when I say this. It's kind of bittersweet for me, because I believe the last teacher I had at Holman High School is retiring. So, so I will be there on Thursday. And also, again, thank you to the Holman Area Foundation for their contributions to our teachers and our schools.
Thank you. Alan, student perspective.
First, with the world language curriculum, it's always good to see them making adjustments and making changes. You can tell the teachers, when you're in their classes, care a lot about it, and they're able to like make a lot of passion in their students, allow them to go on to work with it late in their futures. And so I definitely think that with K-12 education could definitely help foster that. And obviously, foreign language has been associated with like increased intelligence, increased performance on tests, all science proves it, so I think that's great, and taking steps in that direction's amazing. And then with the district facility improvements, it's great to see that we are improving it. I haven't been able to visit some of the elementary schools, but I was at the middle school the other day, and you can tell where it does need some improvement, so it's good to see us looking at that. Like to also say that, like Dr. Mueller said, prom was this weekend, a lot of people had some fun, a lot of fun, and it's just good to see everyone there. And then like other board members have said, graduations this weekend. It's been a long 12 years for some of those students, but it's good to see them, some of them going to school for even longer, and some of them just going straight to work. So good luck to all of them. And then also, congratulations to both for winning that championship.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Yeah, I also like to thank our community members for coming out and presenting from the Building and Grounds Committee. That was a great presentation he put together. I would like to thank the Holman Area Foundation for their support and awarding the funds for the grant requests for our district. Congratulations to our graduating seniors and best wishes to your future endeavors. And lastly, I look forward to seeing the retirees at the retirement reception on Thursday.
Gary?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the, or congratulate the golfers for winning the conference championship. I think that was a big deal. Also like to congratulate all the spring, all the spring sports and all the contests that went on in the spring. I think the Holman School District really shined in a lot of those programs and contests. Building and Grounds presentation was awesome. I thought it was really good. It's been kind of known that I haven't been a real big fan of this, of the plan and doing all this work at once, but I think your presentation really helped and it kind of turned me around because of just the way you stated some of the things on there. So that was really good. That was really helpful to me. And then congratulations to the classes graduating next Saturday, and I hope the kids stay really safe out there and drive carefully, and everybody watches out for the kids, and so we can have a lot of fun, enjoy ourselves. I mean, they can enjoy themselves, I would, I might, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have anything other than that, what everybody else has had. Just you can tell the excitement's kind of in the air in the community, and the school's wrapping up for everybody, not just the seniors, so, yeah, we'll be hitting summer here pretty hard, pretty soon. That's all I have in terms of our debriefs. Just a couple other things. We have our committee reports. Everybody should have received the notes from the March 21st, 2022 SULC Committee. And then just, so that I've been said, we have a number of events for the end of the year. We have the senior recognition night, which is Wednesday, I believe. The retiree reception on the 26th, and graduation, which will be held at the Lacrosse Center on May 28th, 1:00, I believe. We will have live streams on the district YouTube page for the senior night recognition and the graduation, correct? All right, cool. And then the last day of school for the rest of the students would be June 3rd. We will be having, as Dr. Mueller had mentioned earlier, the special board meeting on June 6th, conduct the candidate interviews, and appoint a new board member. And then our next regular board meeting will be on June 13th, and we will be having a board workshop on June 22nd. We will be going to closed session, so Mr. Wopat, would you please read the motion to move to closed session?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby moves to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, in this case, base wage negotiations for educators. I'll do the roll call. Just a reminder, just yes or no. Rebecca Reber?
Yes.
Brian Wopat, yes. Barb Wench?
Yes.
Jennifer Deek?
Yes.
Gary Dunlap?
Yes.
Chris Lau?
Yes.
We have a closed session.